Host makes the sanitary district board study session for September twelfth to order. And ask the clerk to do a roll call, please.
Director Echols.
Here.
My secretary Roberts.
Here.
Ray Arthur Perry.
Here.
Vice President Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
I'm here as well. Thank you. Opening items, or excuse me, public comments. This is the time for anyone who'd like to speak to the board on matters of within our jurisdiction, not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak under public comments, any written or? Thank you. Okay, then let's move to our items of study. And number one, consider awarding contract for community survey services. Research.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I want to turn this over to Marissa Paredes. She's going to be giving this report.
Good morning, Marissa. Good morning.
Good morning, President and Board members. This morning, staff is recommending that the board approve awarding a contract for community survey services to Probowlski Research in the amount of thirty-nine thousand two hundred dollars and direct the general manager to sign the contract. The district conducts a bi-annual community survey in order to seek level of satisfaction feedback and awareness of district programs from district rate payers in order to improve district programs. The district released an RFP for Community Survey Services on July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Per the scope of services outlined in the RFP, the firm is expected to recommend survey methodologies and strategies. Consult with district representatives to develop. Might go out. Good. To develop the survey instrument, identify a sample size of at least one thousand rate payers, analyze the survey results to provide the district with meaningful and useful information, and compile a final report for review by staff, the Board of Directors, and the Citizens Advisory Committee. The district received five proposals in response to the RFP. The five firms and their cost proposals are listed in the staff report from lowest to highest cost. Three district staff members independently evaluated each proposal using the district's best value evaluation criteria and assigned weighted scores for six categories, including cost of services, responsiveness to the RFP, qualifications and experience, references and previous performance, ability to provide services, and timeliness for completing the services. Following this review and scoring, Probowlski Research received the highest overall score from all raiders. The evaluation criteria, evaluation forms, and notes are attached to the staff report. And the overall and combined overall scores for each firm are listed in the staff report from highest to lowest. The fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four budget includes forty-five thousand dollars for community survey services. Based on this best value evaluation, staff is now recommending that the board approve awarding a contract for Community Survey Services to Probowlski Research in the amount of thirty-nine thousand two hundred dollars and direct the general manager to sign the contract. This concludes my report, and I'm now available to answer any questions from the board.
Thank you, Marissa. Questions from the board? Brett?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just question on the weighted performance or rated score. Can you expand a little bit on the responsiveness to the RFP and the ranking of fifteen?
Yes, let me pull that up one moment. So are you referring to their overall score?
Well, that specific category. Can you explain the responsiveness to RFP? What that entails and then? How that's viewed as fifteen versus say a ten or twenty percent of their overall?
Sure. So as far as the weight of the scores, that's determined by the best value evaluation criteria that's been set by the district. So that is a standard weight. Responsiveness refers to the firm's overall ability to comply with the requirements of the RFP. It also looks at if they were able to follow instructions when submitting their proposal. So did they include all required components? Did they meet all of the, did they follow all of the instructions? Is the proposal clear? Is it concise? Did they outline what they would be doing in detail? And so it's kind of an overall view of how they responded to the request and the level of clarity and thoroughness when they completed their proposal.
Okay. All right. So would that also entail like if they excluded certain things that you're like, ooh, ouch?
Yes, it would.
All right. And then you'd said it's the district came up with the fifteen. I understand that, but how?
That is something that I am not aware of. I don't know if someone else can speak on on how that was developed.
There's no really scientific method of how we came with that percentage. We always, when we do the best evaluation, we always want to make sure that the cost is weighted the highest, even though it's not the sole reason why we award a contract because it is not a public works contract. We can award it different, a higher, higher cost. So we always make sure that the cost is higher. We always want to make sure that the total weight is a hundred percent. So we look at all the criterias and we say, okay, is responsiveness for the contract, do we want to rate that higher? Is that really important for us? Or is timeliness of service more important? So we determine how important those factors are, and then we just rate them accordingly. So sometimes they, it might be ten percent on responsive responsiveness to the RP. Sometimes it might be twenty, sometimes it could be eighteen. It just depends on the service that we're seeking and how important that is.
So, okay, that's interesting. So this is not standard across all best value.
The, the way we evaluate is standard, how we evaluate based on best value, but how we weight each criteria and what criteria we determine, that can, that can fluctuate. It definitely can.
Okay, I'm gonna future proof the district because right, I mean, Alan probably know there's a lot of problems with best value in the state of California, and the legislature is already looking at it. They, and if they're starting to look at it, means it's only going to go one way. I think we've got to come up with a methodology to protect ourselves for the future and be able to say, well, here's why this is fifteen and this is twenty. Cost obviously is going to be the highest value, but and it should be standard across the board, or we, I think we run the risk of a lawsuit.
Well, let me add. So when we come up with the weighted scores, let's say fifteen percent, then we, we write down the criterias. Okay, what is the criterias for that fifteen percent? So that way we have some solid ground to stand on. So if anyone wants to challenge it on us, well, here's how we scored it. And so it's, so it's fair for everyone. So we do have some, some written language standards that we can rely on when we, when we set that, that percentage.
But when that, if that was standard across all RFPs, okay, but it sounds like it's not. And that's where I first see some problems.
I, I can definitely, at the board's recommendation, I can consult with our attorney and get his recommendations. And if he believes that what Director Echols is saying, we will definitely make changes to it.
All right. And then last question, but yeah, I would be interested in that because it's out there already. And so just trying to protect, protect us and also the contractors bidding on this work. But and so with that, any bid protests, anything out of the ordinary?
We received some inquiries and requests for raider sheets and the selected proposal. But I haven't heard anything past that.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, this may not be standard, the various criteria waiting, but it was published in the RFP that, that this is how we're going to evaluate this proposal. So every proposer understood where they should put their emphasis.
Yes, we, we identify in, in the RP, here's, here are the criterias that we're going to look at. Now, we don't, we don't, we don't go into details of what each of the criteria, but we say, we, here's the list, you know, we're going to base your, your proposal based on cost, responsiveness to the RP, your qualifications, the timeliness of your service. We list that on the RP, so they know that.
And the percentages were also listed.
I believe so. I'm checking it right now.
When I read the proposal, I think it was.
Yes, it does include the, the weight.
So each proposer knew how to write their RFP based on how to accumulate their best value.
They, they know what, how we're going to evaluate the proposals.
Of the five, we, we've used this firm before for the survey.
Correct, in twenty nineteen.
Yeah, I, I think, is it twice, maybe three, I think, if I remember. Of the other four, have we used them before? We looked at them before?
Yes.
True North conducted the last survey. Yeah.
That's clearing the fog. I thought I'd seen that name before. Okay.
Okay, Scott, in our RFP, did we say that we wanted to have at least a thousand people surveyed?
Yes, it does indicate.
Use that in our RFP.
So you're asking this morning for an approval on this or disapproval?
Correct.
Any other questions for staff? Is appropriate to have the applicant speak? If you'd like.
I mean.
I'll, I'll, well, I'll just make a motion to move to approve staff's recommendation best value to award the contract to Probowlski Research, and I apologize for the pronunciation.
I second it.
I guess you don't need to come up. Further discussion?
Discussion. On discussion, I just wanted to say I completely agree with who we chose because I've used him before and when I was with the city. And he is excellent. And I have no problem on the same type of criteria.
Thank you. Right, Bob?
Well, this is a study session, so I'm not doing. Is it appropriate to make this approval at the study session?
Since it was published previous, yes, we can make, we can take motions.
But it's not generally done. It generally recommended.
Typically don't.
Typically don't, but because we, this is a board meeting, so you have the authority to sign. But the reason why we had, we were requesting the board to approve it because of the, the tight timeline we have to conduct this survey. If you prove it today, then tomorrow night, we're going to the CAC to ask their input on some questions that they would want to recommend for the board to consider. Next time the CAC meets is in November. So we, we have, that's why there was a tight timeline. We want to get this done by the end of the year. So you have this information to help you as we move forward with SB thirteen three.
Will the CAC, or when, when will? You know, I, I think, I think staff and the consultant will begin to formulate the survey questions. And you said to see, you're going to ask the CAC for specific questions. And when will the board get the way in after that?
Yes, after that, we would, we'll come back at the end of September to get, so we would, we want to move on this pretty quickly. So.
No, I, I don't agree. I agree with that we should move quickly. I'm just a little dismayed that I'm, I don't feel as informed as I should be on what, why the district is, what is the purpose of this particular survey? So you know, maybe, maybe I didn't read it thoroughly enough, but.
There, there's going to be some questions under regarding thirteen three, particularly questions about the third cart. Also, we're, we're going to inquire from the residents, do they, do they accept having their trash carts serviced two times a week? And if they're okay, what's their comfort level on the price? You know, so we want to engage some of those kind of questions with the residents, so we can give that information back to the board, so you can make some sound policy decisions.
Yeah. Well, I think I've heard that from you individually, but I'm, I'm comfortable with the way it's going. I, I just would like to keep in tune and be ahead of the CAC. Not necessarily depend on their recommendation, but maybe their recommendations would change based on how the board weighs in on, you know, the particular questions, anyway.
We do have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ours? I motion to approve passage units. Okay, thank you. Let's move to the code enforcement officer's report. David?
Good morning, President Schaefer, members of the board. I'm here to present my report for the month of August. This report summarizes major points for three ordinance enforcement topics covering scavenging graffiti and trash container enforcement. For the month of August, the code enforcement officer focused his efforts on patrols in various parts of the community. The goal is to identify and deter instances of scavenging and residential trash carts left within public view. In the month, month of August, the district saw a number of complaints filed with the CMSD code enforcement staff regarding scavenging activity in the city. As with most complaints, the alleged violations take place in their early morning hours. In order to address these concerns, the code enforcement officer is patrolling the streets by six thirty AM. Included up below are instances of scavenging that were detected while the officer was investigating specific complaints. In the month of August, I had ten investigations listed throughout the city. Any questions on that so far?
Questions?
This is a much higher number than normal, I think. Is, is that because you just had more time to be in the field or?
That is the major point, I think, is, you know, my, my increased hours out there. In the month of August, there were a few customer.
Just one follow-up on the twentieth street, one seven three three twentieth street sounded like that one went a little sideways for you. So where the person refused to do anything. So at that point, would it be appropriate to have the police come in, intercede?
It, it is. Again, it's one of those where I mean, is he gonna, you know, hang around for the PD to show up? And, and you know, I can't really, you know, detain him for, for this kind of a situation. So as, as far as safety goes, I just would rather excuse myself some from that situation. And I mean, he didn't have a whole lot of recyclables. So again, you know, it's a, it's a cost thing, you know, I mean, am I going to put myself at risk for, you know, a few dollars in recyclables?
Got it. All right. Thank you.
Not a problem, sir. So in the month of August, there were a few customer complaints reported to district headquarters regarding trash carts in public view. The following is a list of locations that trash cart violations were found and addressed by the courtesy notice process. A hundred and fifty-eight total cases last month listed by the streets and how many violations were handed out on that particular street. Any questions on that? And then in the month of August, I did have a couple cases of graffiti on trash carts, one eleven Cecil Place.
I had a quick question. On, on your hundred and fifty-eight, were they spread out all over or?
They, they are. It, it varies, you know, through, through different days.
And as far as the areas?
Correct.
Thank you.
David, problem. Do you have? Do you see a trend after? After we have a holiday delay? Like last week, we had a holiday delay.
A lot of violators, but.
Are people calling before or after? In other words, like my trash goes out on Thursday. It gets picked up on Thursday, but every, everybody put, well, most people put their stuff out on Wednesday, right? Do people call like the next day after a holiday and say?
Not that I was aware of that any, any complaints came in about trash carts in public view because I think it's just a citywide. It's kind of, you know, overwhelming with.
Much as we in the city and everybody else publicizes and as much as people know there's delays after holidays, I can't imagine the phone calls to CRNR about, you know, carts not being picked up. I will say this last week was particularly bad. I had two mixed waste carts out and one, one was emptied and one wasn't. So the natural thing for most people is, well, they must be coming back. So they just leave their carts out, right?
Yeah.
Into the next day. And I'm sure you're getting some calls at that point from people.
I hadn't received any, any, you know, messages from staff that we had a complaint about a certain, you know, address or areas that are, you know, affected. But I know when, when there's, you know, a missed day, a holiday like we had, it, it can, you know, be a problem with, you know, giving violation notices because of.
We seem to have in, in my area, I don't know about the rest of you, but we seem to have a, a very large number of missed carts this holiday. I don't know if that's something you want to pass on. It just seemed like it was more prevalent. There was actually one, one of, one neighbor who put their palm fronds in the big mixed waste, which they're supposed to do. But it looked like, if you looked at the can, it looked like a Fourth of July firework because everything was coming way out the top, you know, like three or four feet. And CRNR left that. They didn't pick it up. And I'm okay with that. I think that resident needs to know, you can't, you don't do that. My next door neighbor had a big cardboard box sitting next to his can. They picked the can up and left the cardboard box there, and they should. My opinion. So I, I don't know if people are calling about that stuff. Apparently not.
Not that I'm aware of. And you're right, they, they should be, you know, breaking those downs somewhat to, to get them fit in there, you know, I mean, especially the the overgrown, you know, foliage.
My area, which is College Park, I just wanted to say we must be doing a good job communicating with the public. Because after things are picked up, if they don't take their carts and put them away, they turned around and take them, put them on their grass on the curb, you know, away so that people could park there.
Yeah.
And we have asked that, but I was really surprised watching that that, you know, we're communicating somehow that they're doing that automatically. You know, if they're at work and they cannot take the cart in right away, they just put it up on the curb.
And that's, you know, great for the street sweeping that's following, you know, your trash day. So that's appreciated.
David, what percentage of these cart concerns were called in? And what? That would leave the other percentage for your, you, you to have a.
Actually, these carts were, were everything that I detected out in public view.
Yeah. So there were no.
Nobody called in this, this one for complaints.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Or David? Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good job.
You know, David sneaks up on you too with that electric car. You can't hear him coming. So I'm sure the residents, that's a good tactic with the residents. And the scavengers, you can sneak up on them, right? Excellent. All right. Receiving file oral summary of the thirty-eighth annual Tri-State Seminar.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So on May twenty-second, the board directors approved out-of-state travel for several wastewater maintenance employees to attend the thirty-eighth annual Tri-State Seminar in Las Vegas from August seventh through August tenth of this year. The board directed staff to report back on their experience attending that, that conference. So this morning I have Steve Conno, our wastewater maintenance superintendent, is going to give that report to the board.
All right. Good morning, everybody. So I'd like to thank you for approving for that trip for us. So three of us went, it was myself, our Tony Gomez, our skater tech, and Alex Ariola, our maintenance worker too. So again, thank you for letting us attend. All right. So if you're not familiar with Tri-State, it's one of the biggest ones they do each year. It covers many aspects from collection systems to distribution, treatment, laboratory, terrorism. So for us, we have CWA certificates and we need contact hours. So the seminar allows us to get our contact hours that we need for certificates. So by attending this, we learn a lot what other agencies and other states, how they implement their programs. I've been attending Tri-State for many years and I definitely learned a lot innovative ideas from other, you know, other agencies and all the vendors that are also out there. So I'll just do a little history, brief history of Tri-State. And it was back in eighty-five, there was a meeting between Arizona Water Pollution and the Colorado River Basin. And they wanted to discuss a plan like holding a seminar for their workers. So back in eighty-five, they decided to hold a two-day seminar that year in Bullhead. And that first Bullhead, they had about a hundred twenty attending. So over the years, it's been held at a couple other places for twenty years. It's been held in different places in Laughlin. Due to the increasing attendees, the event was moved to Prim in two thousand and four and was there for nine years. Back in two thousand and thirteen, they finally moved it to the South Point Resort. And it's been there since, and they still talk about moving it to a larger venue because we had over four thousand attendees this year. I know Mark was there, Joe was there. Some of the classes, they had to bring in extra chairs, tables, because the rooms were just, they couldn't hold everybody.
You said four thousand attendees? That's, that's tremendous.
Right. So throughout the week, there's over two hundred classes that we can attend with all different aspects of our industry. There's also, they hold workshops at extra charge if you want to attend those. So all the classes they hold is either in collections, pre-treatment, distribution, laboratory. I'm sure I'm missing some. There are just so many classes you can attend there. Also, they offer getting certified in NASCO. If you need to certify or recertify, you can do it at Tri-State. They also hold tours that you can sign up. I think last year they did Hoover Dam, did a City of Las Vegas wastewater plant and the hotel, the Venetian Hotel. Also, after the classes are done during the day at the end down in the exhibition hall, they open that up and there's vendors in there. And these spots for the vendors, it sells out, I think, in like five, ten minutes each year. And so there was over about five hundred vendor booths that we could go check out. So you know, the vendors, they range from contractors, you know, doing sewer repairs. You've got guys selling utility trucks, combination units. They'll actually have trucks inside the exhibition hall so they can check out all the new equipment, cameras, a lot of stuff for pumps, pump station stuff, valves, you name it, whoever is in the industry, it's going to be there. So in the next two slides, these are the list of classes that me, Alex, and Tony attended. Like Tony, you know, he's the electrical skater, so he concentrated on electrical instrumentation. For me and Alex, we did mostly collections classes and safety classes. So these are the, some of the classes, or most of the classes we attend on the next two slides. So we actually got in a lot of classes between the three of us over that week. So after discussing the Tri-State with my guys that went, I asked them what they took away from attending. Safety was a number one priority. Did a lot of classes on safety. Because it is hazardous out there if you're not using your equipment properly, safely. Alex attended a class, a nozzle class. I was at another one, but he told me that after the class was done, one of the attendees went up to the speaker and says, I want to show you something. So he started taking his shirt off. He was a cleaner and he wasn't properly using a skid on a nozzle. A skid attaches to the nozzle and that keeps it from staying going straight in line. You don't want it going in laterals or sometimes that nozzle will come back. You don't know when it's coming back at you, coming out of the manhole. Sometimes that nozzle will come back. You don't know and it's coming back at you, coming out of the manhole. And if you're sta- you're standing above the manhole, it can, uh, harm you or kill you. So this guy took off his shirt and showed the speaker. The nozzle went up in his shirt and somehow it went into his body. And blew up his body full of water. So he almost died. So. That was kind of, when Alex was telling me, yeah, I know these things are dangerous. Sewer pipe plugs also, if those aren't used correctly. Or if they explode inside the manhole, if you're standing above the manhole, those things will come out, take you out, kill you or harm you. So safety was the biggest thing the guys talked about. Um, also another thing they took away was when we're doing remodeling or. Repairs in the streets or whatever is to always include the field personnel. In the decision making, cause you know, they're the ones out there making, they gotta work it, maintain it. So they know what, what we need to do. Um. Also, a class me and Tony attended was called, class called Finding Your Why. W H Y. And that class was interesting. Um. It was how, what is your purpose in life, your job? You know, you wake up, what do you do? What do you want to do? Um, also working on your career path, you know, what steps you need to do. How do you communicate your path to other workers, your coworkers, your supervisors, et cetera? Um, so those are the classes that, you know, that we went, you know. Uh, we're looking forward to it next year. Uh, so I'd like to thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, thanks for making the insurance guy really nervous about. When you said taking off his shirt, I thought, well, they're in Vegas, they do a lot in Vegas. Not at the pool. Any que- other questions for Steve? Thank you for the report. I'm sure you guys all went, uh, back to your rooms about six or seven o'clock and fed.
Actually, I'm too old to do that drinking all night. So like me and Alex went to go see a movie. One night, you know, that movies theater in the casino. Yeah, early nights for me.
Don't be talking old when you look at the five, except for Brett.
Dave, did you give Mark your drink ticket?
Uh, actually I had all my drink tickets still. I was going through all my papers.
What happens in Vegas stays in Vegas. Come on now. But it's, it's inner, I, I mean, again, back to the four thousand, um. That's really an impressive number of people for a seminar like that. And Art and I were talking about South Point. South Point's a perfect place to have a, a, something like this. Because one of the big things about going to Vegas is you don't want to have a conference. In the middle of Vegas, cause everybody's off doing Vegas. Having it at South Point is really.
Yeah, it's kind of far from the strip.
Yeah, and you know, it, uh, uh, I don't know where else they would move it to, maybe. You may be looking to go into the convention center, which is enormous over there and.
Well, Tri-State, you know, so many attendees because the price is so cheap to go. It's like ninety-nine bucks for the conference. And the hotels are like eighty, ninety dollars a night. So.
Thanks for the, uh, the report and the takeaways.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, move to item four, the. Contribution to coastal cleanup day at the bay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Noladi Minway will be giving his report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The district has received a contribution application request from the Newport Bay Conservancy. For the annual coastal cleanup day that's happening on September twenty-third. This is an action item. We are bringing it to the board at a study session because the board meeting is after the event. So. The Newport Bay Conservancy is requesting a sponsorship of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. The district has sponsored this event for the past two years. Um, for the sponsorship, the district will receive higher visibility by having the district's logo. On the social media pages, the T-shirts, the website and all event signage. This is justified. By this event tying directly into the district's purpose of solid waste collection. It also meets the district's just cause of keeping our waterways, uh, pollution free. So we felt that this would be a great tie-in and a way to support this event once again. So with that, we'll leave it to the board to.
Yeah, uh, look, I'll, I'll get to all of you in a second. I had a quick question. When we had our big spill, Labor Day spill. I don't remember how many years ago.
Twenty fifteen.
Twenty sixteen. Didn't we get some pushback from this group about what we were doing? Who was it that, now what group was it that?
It was the Orange, Orange Coast, uh, um, coast keeper, orange, or.
It was a coast keeper.
Coast, it was coast keepers, not, okay, um. Okay, I think Arlene had her hand up first.
I just wanted to say, I think this is great publicity for us because. We're out there showing the public that we're backing a lot that's going on in our area. And I'm so glad to see this. I wish we do more publicity, uh, PR. Thank you.
Uh, Brett?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just to clarify, there's one section that says two fifty, but the other section is one thousand two fifty. It's one thousand two fifty.
Yes, our one thousand two hundred and fifty.
Okay, and so our logo and stuff on T-shirts and social and all that.
T-shirt, the website, all their event signage on their social media as well.
And then I saw, well, we actually have a table or booth, or is it just, we send some people and we.
We will be volunteering and we also invite the board of directors, the CAC and members of the community to join us. You sign up as a group and we will be cleaning the back bay this year.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
At our last, uh, application that came to us, we were short on money. Do we have enough in the account still to pay?
We do, we do.
What will that, where would that put us?
I would have to get with finance and find that out.
Real close to this amount already. I think it's a balance, but as long as we have the money.
Bob, do you have a question? I, I'm just gonna, oh, go ahead, Brett. Nope, I was just, no, go ahead. Um. I don't have a problem supporting it. Believe me, I, 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 I don't. Um, I agree with Arlene that we should be doing more of this if we can and. You know, if it, if it's a benefit, um. In looking over their sponsorship levels, I don't see a lot of difference between the three levels of contribution. In other words, for twelve fifty, the only thing that's different from the seven fifty. Is the word prominent logo display. In the seven fifty, we give a logo display, even the two fifty, we still get our name on the. The shirts and all the re- event signage, um. I, going back to what Art said and where we are on our contributions, I'm more inclined to do the seven fifties. Contribution instead of the twelve fifty, because. I don't know what the difference between prominent logo display and logo display is. Prominent. Prominent isn't worth five hundred bucks to me.
Nope.
So.
And it, is that a motion?
I'll let you make the motion, cause I think that's where you were going.
Great minds are, I don't know, something like that, but yes, uh. I was gonna make the same suggestion that we go at seven fifty, because again, I, when I saw prominent. So I kind of asked about booths and things like that, but, so I would make a motion that we do support the cause. It's important, but we go at the seven fifty. Uh, contribution level this year, um.
I'll second that.
And then just to follow up. Some of these groups or what, whatever it is, it seems like we get asked is the second or third time in a row where we get asked like last minute. We're doing this at a study session or we're do.
Yeah.
These people need to come to us. They've had this event planned. I've known about this event for a million years. Come to us a little sooner next time and, you know, just.
Yeah, in, in to that, that end, we have a motion in a second, but to that end. If it's not a lot of work for staff, could we get a breakdown or a list of what we've, I, I don't remember who we've donated to. Over the last year, can we take a look at that? So as we go into twenty twenty-four, we have a better idea of what to expect. If that's not too much work for you guys. Okay, awesome. Um, any other discussion? So the motion is for the seven hundred and fifty dollar level. I don't, I'm sure they won't argue with us on that. All those in favor? I opposed. Motion carries unanimous for the seven fifty level. Thank you. Um, and finally, our receiving file on the fats, oil and grease program.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Joe Jenkins of EEC Environmental will be giving his report. Uh, it's Joe, uh, and his firm, they are the responsible, um, firm that we hired to. To manage our fog control program, which is a requirement of the California two thousand and six general waste discharge requirements. For, uh, Santa Rosa sewer system. So, uh, Joe gives the board an annual assessment on how. Our fog control program is doing and, um, uh, to comply with, with the WDR. So I'm going to turn it over to Joe. He's got a presentation for you.
Good morning again. Glad to have you with us.
Thank you. Morning, uh, board and thank you, Scott. Okay, let me just go through the first slide here. I just wanted to start by, by giving you guys a little background of the fog program activities that EEC provides for the district. And really our, our main activity is conducting what we call risk-based FSC inspections. Going out and conducting the routine inspections of all the food service establishments to ensure that they're complying with the rules and regs program. And we prioritize the inspections based off of the food service establishment's risk to discharge fog to the sewer system. So we want to try and maximize our resources and our time on the ones that could cause the biggest problems for the district. Along with the inspections, we also provide, uh, fog control program, education and outreach materials to the restaurants. We do the initial enforcement actions and conducting follow-up inspections for compliances. And, and drafting and issuing enforcement letters. We manage all of the inspection data and historical records of the FSCs and assist in, in the permit issuance and renewals. As needed, we do plan review and customer service support for new facilities or any facilities that have questions. And then we work with operations and maintenance team to identify and review the enhanced maintenance locations. Uh, especially the ones that are, are there because of fog related issues. Okay? So a little bit about how we manage the, uh, the FSC inventory for the district. We use. A number of resources to go out and identify the facilities that should be in the program and should be inspected on a regular basis. Probably our biggest resource is the healthcare agency. We download the list from Orange County Healthcare Agency of all the facilities that. Are within the service area and we compare them against our database to see if there's any new ones in there that we don't have. We also coordinate with the city occasionally to get business license lists. During any facility we identify through the plan review process also gets added. And then just through our field inspections, if we're driving around, we see something was one. Facility one day and then we go there and it's a different one now, then we, we update it based on that. So it's just here's some statistics of the number of FSCs in the program and then how many of them. Have gravity grease interceptors versus hydro mechanical grease interceptors, which are the smaller grease traps. You can see from the previous fiscal year, we had a slight increase in the total number of, of FSCs. We're seeing a lot less. Turnover this year compared to the previous years. In, in a little bit less of a growth, uh, but what's good is the corresponding increase of FSCs resulted. Also in a corresponding increase of gravity grease interceptor. So as new ones are coming in, they're putting in their devices and they're controlling their fog, which is good to see. And grease traps stayed static, the GIs. So this is how we, we do the initial risk assessment of the facilities and determine their risk to discharge fog and prioritize. Them for inspections. So we first evaluate the presence of what we call high-risk cooking equipment. So these are, are grills, griddles, woks, deep fryers. Anything that's used for cooking food that could generate fats, oils and grease within the kitchen. And we also take in the, the FSC's relationship to the enhanced maintenance location. So we. All of the facilities we're putting into, uh, GIS geographic information systems. And we're comparing their location to the known EML locations. Whether or not the FSC has a grease interceptor and then any additional unique BMP requirements that they may have where. We want to make sure we're going back to them on a regular basis to make sure they're implementing those BMPs. So how that breaks out, we currently have forty-five that are inspected on a quarterly basis, eighty that are done semi-annual. A hundred and seventy-five are done on an annual basis and then the remaining two sixty are bi-annual inspections. So one of our goals when we do inspections is to maintain as high of a compliance rate as possible and to improve. The compliance rates year over year. We have a goal of ten percent or less in terms of, of non-compliances. And so for total GRE inspections, we're four hundred and twenty-eight conducted, uh, in the last fiscal year. And we had a five percent non-compliance rate. So that was well within that ten percent goal. And for total BMP inspections, this is going into the kitchens and, and more within the kitchen area to make sure like scraping pans and training employees. Get a, a five percent non-compliance rate. So again, uh, then that was a, a drastic improvement over the previous years. Where we had a, a sixteen percent non-compliance rate. And we, we believe the previous high rate was because there was a lot of turnover, a lot of new employees. They had a, a lot of issues with training logs not being updated. So they've had time now to implement their programs. Throughout the year, we evaluate the inspection frequencies of the facilities and will adjust them as needed. There's a, a, a few different factors. We evaluate the compliance history of the facility. Maintenance or CCTV observations, comments from, from the operations and maintenance team. If they identify. Areas where they're seeing heavier fog, we may increase inspection frequencies for the facilities in those areas. We review the healthcare agency inspection lists and identify non-compliances through the healthcare agency inspections. And also just through any weird field observations that our guys see when we're out there. A couple of examples of where this occurred, these are more detailed in our report and more specific, but. There was a, a breakfast, a small breakfast cafe. Uh, but they had, they were originally inspected annually, but we did start noticing that they had very frequent. BMP non-compliances. They don't have a grease interceptor, so it's important that they're doing their BMPs and implementing them. But we would find that year over year, they ju- they would be in non-compliance, we do a follow-up. And then they wouldn't do anything until we came back again. So we decided to increase their inspection frequency. So they could have more of a presence with them, so they could have more consistent compliance. And then when we start seeing that consistent compliance, we can back off. Them a little bit more. And this is just a common one, a larger breakfast chain. Uh, again, consistent non-compliances and consistent private sanitary sewer spills. And so we, we're originally doing them annually, but now we're inspecting them quarterly.
Would that happen to be a breakfast chain at Arbor and Geese Service?
Yes.
We are gonna ask that question. We're still having issues with them?
No, uh, they, they are cleaning their, their lateral line on a regular basis and we haven't had. Additional private SSOs at that location or issues.
Okay.
And, and so I, I think we're staying on them and.
Are you still doing them quarterly though?
Yeah, we had gone to quarterly with them, didn't we?
And there's just some facilities where they just need that, that extra attention.
They, just as a side to that, I mean, they are right in the middle of Fast Food Row. I mean, that from the, from the freeway to Baker Street. All of, they're all greasy. Every one of those places is greasy. So unfortunately, they're probably the biggest. So. All of that contributes to our overall situation.
Yeah, and one of the saving graces for the district is I think the, the public sewer line there is like a ten inch line.
Yeah, I think.
Not as prone to backups, but they still, you don't want to have private spills and parking lots full of grease and issues. E- either. So it's good to keep on them.
Well, Joey, is that a sewer lateral or is that a?
That's a, that's a main sewer line. And so this, this, um, picture here was Paul Reno and Trinity. Um, if, if you guys remember the issues we had on Paul Reno.
Oh, yeah.
And Bristol, kind of that area. And so this, this is, it's an old photo. This is two thousand and eleven. So that. So that, that area is actually a lot better now just because they broke up that shopping center that was there and, and they all put in grease interceptors. So, and, and this is just, uh, a slide here that kind of talks to some of the successes of the district, you know. It's already over ten years ago, but the district had nine, almost, almost a hundred enhanced maintenance locations. Uh, but through, through rehab and rehabilitation programs and just proactive work to resolve these issues. There's currently eighteen with the vast majority of those being siphon locations. And, and so the ones that are still on the list that are especially that are fog related, we still have a pretty high focus on these areas. And so a couple of examples, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I, before we jumped, I just want, what's our enforcement penalties that are available to us?
Right.
Or repeat offenders or just people who just aren't going to get it?
Right. And so we, we do have, uh, enforcement response plan that we implement. So our initial ones are, are follow-ups and then we'll go to enforcement letters. If you have a, a food service establishment that doesn't currently have a grease interceptor, then the strongest enforcement is, is threatening to revoke what we call their conditional waiver permit. So they operate under a permit that allows them to operate without their interceptor. It's a conditional waiver and then we can revoke that waiver and make them put in a grease interceptor.
I, I think the last one, last major one, if I remember right, was the guy over on Seventeenth Street.
Yeah.
The, where we made him put an interceptor in.
Right. Yeah, there's been a few instances.
Few years ago.
At the Greek restaurant?
The Greek restaurant, yeah.
Yeah.
Darn it.
In the, but fortunately, fortunately, we haven't had a, a lot that we've had to escalate to that level. And the district is very good at working, being business friendly and working with these facilities because we're making them spend, you know, fifty thousand dollars starting to put in a grease interceptor.
Got it. We also had a place on Newport Boulevard that we have that. Former mayor, uh, Arlene had a question for you.
You know, you have a huge job because right now all the places, not all, but a lot of the places are closing. And do you have a category, a list that you are able to check that off? Because, I mean, there's between restaurants and, you know, fast food places.
Yes, we do. Yes.
Okay.
We, even though they close, we still keep their records in our database. Uh, we, we end date their name and then their new name becomes OOB or out of business. And they stay on the list and they stay on the map. And then when the inspectors are in that area, they double check to see the, to ensure that we're still out of business.
I was wondering about that. Thank you.
That's why, uh, when you look at the total inspection numbers, it's, 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 there's a lot more there because you have some facilities go out of business and they come back again. It's not necessarily a brand new facility, but when they do that, we, we take that opportunity if we can to reevaluate them. If they don't have an interceptor, that's our opportunity to get them to pull one in when a new business comes in.
Wow.
There's still some areas that we're, you know, we're, we're having difficulties with, like, you know, Nineteenth Street there, uh, west of Newport where the old district office was. All those restaurants have been down that street that are older, that were there before the fog program that don't currently have grease interceptors. And so that's, that's a big focus for us.
You're talking about the grease interceptor is an in-ground installation?
Yeah, in, when I refer to, I'm sorry, when I refer to grease interceptor, I'm referring to both.
In, in the, in the restaurant and in, in the ground.
Right.
And, and so a lot of those grandfathered-in restaurants don't even have the, in the restaurant grease interceptors.
But Joe, they can have a, a above-ground interceptor, right?
They can have, they can have an above-ground and actually it's a good solution for a lot of those locations. Uh, obviously being less expensive to install, but they're smaller facilities. So they usually have one major sink where most of their fog waste goes into. So they could capture that. And so we've, we've worked with them. We tried to do a, a grease interceptor installation assistance program. We've evaluated that for the district to help, but there's a lot of risks and liabilities to the district in doing that approach. So.
Uh, Joe, do you have any grease interceptors?
Mainline grease interceptors?
Yes. I mean, this is a main line and, and obviously grease is coming from one or, one or multiple places. Uh, or is it even practical to have an inline greased interceptor or these? Where this kind of, uh, grease accumulation is occurring?
Well, the, not, not to put one in, in your main line, I don't think you, that would be, um, very practical.
Yeah, okay.
A siphon kind of works as a mainline grease interceptor indirectly. Uh, but no, the, the, the key for these, when you have a lot of facilities coming in and what worked for this one was what helps is if not all of them are discharging to the exact same location, because then you have a lot of flow coming in with a lot of splashing and it just kind of creates its own little stoppage there and allows for fog to accumulate. So the better you can keep your sewer line flowing at with high, uh, high speeds. So it's, it's squaring velocity. Then you'll have less issues of fog accumulation in that area. And so the district does a good job of removing sags and lining lines that have issues and.
If you had a mainline interceptor, who pays for that? We do, right?
Yeah.
Well, like, yeah, I, I, I think it could be assessed in different ways.
Oh, okay. I got you.
I had a question.
Wait, wait, Mark had, I'm sorry. Mark is.
I just wanted to contribute a little bit to the discussion on mainline grease interceptor. I don't believe it's going to work and, and, and it would cause us myriad of, of issues because you'd get grit, sand, other things settling out in this. It'd be like a, a treatment plant clarifier. Uh, and so it really isn't practical. The grease interceptors in a restaurant, errand in parking lot as an example, that only the kitchen and specifically the kitchen sink go to the clarifier. The typical toilets and other things bypass that clarifier that's in the parking lot. So from a practical perspective, it just, uh, it doesn't, it will not work and it's going to be a big maintenance sore and like you mentioned, cost to install a grease interceptor in a large sewer.
We do a pretty good job and EEC does a really good job in keeping track of this stuff. So I don't know if we would ever have a knee. I, it's an interesting concept, I think, especially when you have pockets of rest, like we do in Costa Mesa. We have pockets of restaurants, right?
Yeah.
But I.
Mr. President, if I could also add in response to Director Echo's comment, uh, the ultimate authority in penalty enforcement mechanism is disconnection of the premises from the sewer system.
Yeah, yeah.
You have that in the state law.
Yeah, we've done.
Kind of drastic, but, uh, we've never gone to DEFCON yet. Using the tools they have.
Hopefully not my favorite restaurant. Sorry, Arlene.
They didn't even touch it.
It's your magnetic, it's your magnetic personality. Maybe it's me.
Out of curiosity, do you ever think about, or maybe you do it, coordinating with the Chamber of Commerce in Costa Mesa on their, uh, opening, their ribbon cuttings? You know, sometimes, uh, they have these ribbon cuttings and they're opening new restaurants or, or new marketplaces and, you know. I just wondered how we pick them up.
Yeah, we haven't participated in that. That's a great idea, I think, to be there as they open and to start off on a good foe, uh, good foot, I'm sorry, with, with the facilities and represent the district. So, so, yeah, we, when we get either, it's usually going through the annual list. So the facility could be open for a few months before we do our initial inspection. We will have a list of potential new facilities to go and check out throughout the year. And then they're prioritized, but it's usually as the inspectors go through, we have four different zones based on the quarters for the inspectors to go through. And when they're in that zone, they'll look at those facilities. So it could be two or three months before, after they open before we get there. So that, that is a, a good idea. If you have a large shopping center or a large facility that's opening and there's a ceremony.
Yeah, because they have them, you know.
Very suggested.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, Joe, I was wondering, um, what percentage of your time is involved in re-inspections and in, in, in headed towards enforcement processes? Do you have a number on that?
Yeah, I, I don't have a specific number, but it's, it's not a high percentage, especially this last year since we had such a good compliance rate. Uh, only five percent. And so each month to month, our inspectors might have, um, one or two facilities, maybe, maybe five at the most where they go and schedule and do the follow-up inspection. And I think we had like the one, one facility that issued a letter to this year.
What is the highest, wow, what, what, um, what, and those re-inspections, what is, um, likely to be the cause? Uh, the highest percentage of re-inspections?
Yeah, the, the highest percentage are, are grease interceptors that have exceeded the twenty-five percent rule. And so what we'll do when we identify that, depending on how full the interceptor is, if it's very full, we'll make them pump it that day or the, the next day. But usually we'll give them seven days to pump out their grease interceptor. And then we'll re-inspect them after those seven days. We, we do re-inspections for BMPs and, and for employee training logs, especially for the facilities that are in hotspots or we've had historic issues with them. But if there's say like a biannual facility that we've, don't inspect as often, that follow-up inspection may not be prioritized over the other ones that are high risk.
How can we put the, are, are these repeat offenders generally?
Sometimes, yeah. It's, it's a, it's a mixture.
So you'd, so the percentage of time that on re-inspections is minimal?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And we're, I'm working very closely with Steve Kano, the, uh, you know, to review the inspections and to identify repeat offenders. And we are starting to escalate more enforcement on them through, through letters and.
Uh, let me, is it easy for the restaurant to know that that grease interceptor should be, something should be done with it?
Not necessarily, uh, unless their pumper is telling them when it's getting pumped out.
We're talking about the ones in the restaurants?
Oh, inside the restaurants? Yeah, it's easy. They can, uh, it depends on where it's located. If it's under their main sink, then they should be, I mean, they should be cleaning those monthly at least. You know, if they're a high food producer, then more often. So they can pop the lid and see how full. A lot of for the smaller ones, they're cleaning them themselves. And so it's easy for them to open it and see how it's doing and.
Way, way to get you that information without having to go do that inspection.
It's, it's possible. There are those programs that we'd have to set up at like an account for them, for them to submit it to us or some sort of system. Uh, we could have them email us their log or some sort of notice that they did it. It's, it's, you're putting a lot of trust that the facility is doing the right thing and cleaning it correctly. And you could trust more the, the pumppers than the actual FSC, you know.
I, I would think that would be, you know, for, for, you know, new employees and, 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 and owners that uh, aren't on top of the situation, you know, that would at least be a trigger that, well, you didn't get that monthly data.
Right. Yeah. No, it's, it, there are programs that are implementing that type of oversight and, and that type of.
So your other clients.
Not ones that we're working with currently, but we're hearing about it in other, uh, in other areas where others in the country.
And they clean it themselves. I assume they take the grease out and put it into a, I assume they put that grease into a container that goes to a facility. Is that, am I right on that?
Yeah. And so they have to, they have to keep it separated from their yellow grease, what we call their yellow grease container, which is their, their deep fryer grease.
Yeah.
Uh, because it's considered contaminated. And anything more than five gallons, they have to take to a certified hauling company.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, on the same topic, I was going to ask that question. Can it be taken to another trash service company to get rid of?
If it can, if that, so if it's less than five gallons, it can be as long as it doesn't leak or spill or cause a mess, that sort of thing.
Trash company, where would they take it? Just to the regular dump?
Yeah. And feel, considered in organic waste at that time. So whatever.
They probably, they could take it to CRNR for their anaerobic stuff. I mean,
Yeah.
Essentially, but maybe that's a program somewhere down the line.
I know one restaurant that does that and it goes to, not to CRNR company, but a different company. It's in a trash can from them. They put it in there and then they take it.
Yeah.
Are you talking about a grease? You're talking about a particular type of?
Yeah.
Yeah. Not, 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 I, I would think thirteen eighty-three would be very concerned about it going to the dump.
Oh, I, no, no, no doubt. I'm not sure that's where it goes. I'm just saying that's, I'm assuming that's where it goes. It's in a.
Yeah, and I'm not, I, I couldn't speak to them all if they separated it out or if they just put it in some sort of container with a lid and throw it in the dumpster.
Or maybe they should go out in the parking lot, pour it down some other.
Well, if not, yeah.
Hopefully not.
We talked about, uh, some of the current EML locations that we're still monitoring very closely. Mention Nineteenth Street a minute ago, but also the camp in the lab, uh, working very closely with them to make sure they, they have consistent compliance. Those are kind of the two areas. So the best way to evaluate the effectiveness of your fog program is how many fog-related SSOs or fog-related backups that you are having. And so this, this is just a graph and I'll explain a little bit. It's a little busy of, of the historical SSOs of the district. So total public SSOs, that's the, the top line. I, I shouldn't make them all blue, probably. That's, that's, you know, for next time. Is the more top higher, higher peaking arc there. And then fog-related public SSOs is the middle blue one that kind of peaks in the middle. Um, but what we've identified through those is a lot of those are residential related, uh, fog-related SSOs. We had a great trend going in the, since two thousand and thirteen, the district hadn't had a public fog-related SSO that was contributed to a food service establishment, which we did, just had one last year, unfortunately. So, um, every, every good thing, I guess, ends occasionally, but that's the goal is.
But the guy in Pomona Street?
Yeah. Yeah. But it's still, uh, really good numbers and, and a really good metric. And that's not, not all through us. We'd like to take a hundred percent credit through that, but it's also through the proactive sewer line cleaning that the district does and all the rehab and re- and rehabilitation programs. So just some recommendations, we have a longer list of recommendations in the report, but these are kind of the key ones. Uh, just recommend continuing to, to do fog risk-based fog inspections focusing on those, those FSCs that have the highest risk to discharge fog. And just in, especially focused in those two EML locations where we think that's the highest risk to have a fog-related spill. Continuing to try and meet the, the ten percent compliance goals or non-compliance goals, I should say, for BMP and GRE inspections. And then continuing to escalate enforcement on non-compliance issues. So you know, meeting Steve, reviewing the list month to month and seeing if there's any routine or repeated issues there or any potential issues where we need to take it a little bit more serious. And then some of the other ones that we know that I don't have in my presentation is just, is just, you know, trying to do a little bit more residential fog outreach. And so I think some of the events that the district attends, that you could bring educational materials or handouts or whatever to give to the public, uh, those always seem to, to work. And then we'll have to start evaluating the requirements of the new WDR that just came into effect this year that it won't necessarily affect the fog control pro- program, but it'll affect how it's represented in your sewer system management plan. Okay. Any final questions?
I, I would really like in the future to hear from you about the programs where, um, you know, where they have to make a monthly report or something.
Okay.
Because I think that would bring it to the owner and the, oh, and may, and maybe, you know, via the owner. Uh, then he knows he's got six new employees and, um, you know, that, that would put him at a different kind of risk or put our sewer system at a different kind of risk. Uh, that this is, you know, this is the second most important pro, in public health safety program that I can think of. Our cleaning is, uh, uppermost and costs a, a lot more. Um, this isn't an expensive program, but you know, I, I, I think it's, uh, the second most important program, although, um, um, I'll comment later on the, 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 the pump station maintenance. Um, so pump stations were the very highest priority that the public health people. The very highest priority that the public health people told me about when I came on the board. And we've done quite a lot of good work in that area, so. And then you and I were involved in, in creating this program when the WDR program was initiated, so. Thank you for your good work.
Yeah, I, just to echo that, I, I think we have a terrific partnership with you guys, I mean. Your reports are concise, they're easy to understand for us and I. What did you say?
It's because I'm the one writing them.
I wouldn't get to go there, Joe. Uh, but, but thank you for, for keeping us informed on this. I don't know of anybody else that can make grease exciting. Good job with that, so we have a great partnership and we appreciate everything you, you do for us.
And we are currently working with Mark and his team to integrate our fog database into the city works database. So you guys can have a lot more oversight on our progress and and have a little bit more different types of. Reports that may be more interesting to see how it's being.
Just keep an eye on my favorite big breakfast chain, okay?
Yeah, we definitely will, always.
All right. Thanks again.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, we're at the point now for adjournment to close session, I believe. We have conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation. Pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D of government code section five four nine five six point nine. And we will adjourn to close session for that before.
We have a public comment, Mr. Mosher, he has his hand raised.
Okay, before we adjourn to close session, the clerk informs me that we have public comment, so take it away.
Uh, yeah, thank you, President Schaefer, this is Jim Mosher. I just wanted to notice the. Comment that the notice you just read is a rather unusual. Condition for holding a closed session. It does happen occasionally, but it gives a very bad impression to the public. The notice is telling us. That the district has done something bad that could subject it to litigation. But the district does not want the public to know what bad thing it did. And so. I would just note that the notice gives the public a bad impression. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to take about a two and a half minute break before we go in, are we going back here? Before we all leave, and I know some of you are going to have to leave, but. When I adjourn this morning after we come back. If it's okay with all of you, I'd like us to adjourn in remembrance of yesterday. I know it's a day late, but. We will be adjourning in honor of the victims of nine eleven, the first responders. And those who continue to die post-trauma, so that'll be our adjournment this morning, okay? So let's take a couple minutes and then we'll meet in the back. Okay, we are back and returned from open session. Conference of legal counsel on anticipated litigation. Paragraph two of subdivision D of government code section five four nine five six point nine. And the report is that no, no reportable action was taken during our closed session. And with that, we'll go to oral communications and director comments, anybody?
I have one and and it's, I was remiss in doing this when. Uh, the fog program was being presented. Uh, the last recommendation was CSD is very low. On reactive maintenance at the pump stations and and I think I said in the open session that. This was the single most important thing for the county health department. Uh, you know, I knew all them because, you know, I was. We had a lot of meetings with them when I was working Orange County Sand District. And what I'd like to do is see. If we can't figure out some way, I, I, I know Orange County Sand District is a big agency, but. They're enormously reactive. In, in instrumentation that would be valuable to. That is valuable to them and their pump station inspection, and so I'd like to see. Some thought given to whomever we have, I think there's two employees that involved in pump station and instrumentation and. The react, you know, the, the reactive maintenance is just a device that measures something. Often, so I'd like to see it continue, I think that. I think that's very important.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? If there's nothing else, we'll adjourn and adjourn to our board meeting of September or whatever. Twenty-first. Twenty-fifth.
Want to do that in the name of the.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and and we are, like I had mentioned earlier, I'm going to adjourn the meeting in memory of our nine ele, of the nine eleven victims. First responders who were victims and those who continue to die from the trauma of September eleven.
I think you should add the Morocco incident event.
Can do that. Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.